Good evening, and thank you everyone for bearing with us during our setup and trying to get this working. Tonight's Planning Board Meeting, January 12th, 2022, will be a virtual meeting. It will be recorded by Zoom, and it may be recorded by Urban Media Arts, formerly Malden Access Television. I've not been notified by anyone else requesting that they were going to also videotape or audio record this meeting. First thing we're going to do, as we always do, is we're going to have the roll call for the planning board members. And I will start, Chakaioven Planning Board. Next person will be Patrick. Patrick Hayes is unmuted. Patrick Hayes?
Patrick Hayes, Planning Board.
Very good. Kelly Ferguson?
Kelly Ferguson, Planning Board.
Ken Antonucci?
Ken Antonucci, Planning Board.
So why did you have Resilac?
Our Dutch Gabrisa Asi, Planning Board.
Eric McCush? Eric McCush, can you unmute? Way in?
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Thank you. Henry Susi?
Henry Susi, Planning Board.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Patrick Fitzgerald, Planning Board.
And I believe, I don't see Eric Henry. So I'm not sure if he's on or couldn't get on or what the, what his situation is. He may be joining us after. Okay, Michelle says Eric Henry is emailing her. Hold on one moment. Is this Eric Heesweet? Okay, well, let's move forward and then see. See if we can join him afterwards. First thing I'd like to do this evening is read a statement. As Chair of the Planning Board and on behalf of the Board, I would like to make a statement apologizing to the Malden community for an incident involving the use of a racist term by a member of the public during our last meeting on December 8th, 2021. We acknowledge and regret the offense to the Malden community caused by the lack of action and insensitivity to address the incident during the hearing. We did not intend to hurt the community, however, we understand that impact matters. The Planning Board will work closely with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator by attending sensitivity training, and we are committed to denouncing all forms of discrimination. Thank you very much. Ken, could you read the? I see you're unmuted. Could you read the notice for this evening's first hearing? 320 State Highway, also known as 735 Broadway.
Yes, the Malden Planning Board will virtually and remotely hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, tabled on September 13th, 2021, on the petition of Pew Management LLC on behalf of property owner Motel Realty Company, Inc., Permit Application Number CMID 0374532021, seeking a special permit under Title 12, Chapter 12, Section 030 of the Code of the City of Malden, formerly known as Chapter 12 Revised Ordinances of 2020, as amended of the City of Malden.
No, I can't either.
Can you hear me?
No, I can't hear you at all, Ken. If you could start over and try speaking a little bit louder or adjusting your volume?
I don't know, if it's just, if it's just you, can anybody else hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Let's try again, Ken, sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, I'm gonna start again from the beginning. And let me know if you cannot hear me. The Malden Planning Board will virtually and remotely hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, tabled on September 13th, 2021, on the petition of Pew Management LLC on behalf of property owner Motel Realty Company, Inc., Permit Application Number CMID 037453-2021, seeking a special permit under Title 12, Chapter 12, Section 30 of the Code of the City of Malden, formerly known as Chapter 12 Revised Ordinances of 2020, as amended of the City of Malden, to allow warehouse use and wholesale and distribution use of property in the Highway Business Zoning District, namely, a new building to be constructed containing 94,000 square feet, and a portion of which will be located at the property known as and numbered 320 State Highway Route 1, Malden, Mass., and also known as 735 Broadway, Malden, and by the Malden City Assessors Parcel ID Number 184573368.
Thank you, Ken. Michelle, if you could take us up to where? Michelle, if you could bring us up to speed on where we are and what happened to the last meeting in September?
Yes. Thank you. On September 13th, 2021, the planning board held a public hearing and tabled the public hearing in its decision to allow the opportunity for the city planner and city engineer to meet with Mass DOT and petition regarding the feasibility of the following modifications to the proposed site access and egress. Modify the driveway and curb cut on Route 1, Malden, that's the eastern side drive, to a dimension that allows long time for trailer and truck traffic access egress to the site via Route 1. To reduce the driveway and curb cut on Broadway, the southern side drive to 24 feet and restrict use to access egress of only passenger vehicles and small trucks. To install signage at Broadway Side Drive, the southern side drive to prohibit tractor trailers access egress via Broadway and restrict access egress via Broadway to passenger vehicles and small trucks. For the record, I'm reading from the Planning Report and Recommendation Supplement dated January 12th, 2022. This supplement the Planning Report Recommendation dated September 13th, 2021. So since September 13th, 2021, the following has happened. On September 30th, 2021, city staff, I, myself, city engineer, young link building commissioner Nelson Miller, virtually attended a pre-application, pre-partment technical meeting with Massachusetts Department of Transportation, District Ford Deputy District Highway Director Frank Suzinski and his traffic engineers and project development staff and participant and his engineers. Also, the petitioner appealed the planning board decision to deny endorsement of the proposed subdivision plan of the property. That's Land Quip Civil Action, number 2021, miscellaneous 000487. The litigation was filed on October 1st, 2021, and temporarily suspended via court order on December 6th, 2021, as confirmed by the parties' motion to stay action on December 8th, 2021. Petitioner also filed a document called 735 Broadway, 320 State Highway, Proposed Traffic Monitoring Program dated October 20th, 2021. It was unsigned on a few minutes, but letterhead. Petitioner also filed a memorandum, Transportation Impact Assessment Review, Proposed Warehouse Building, 735 Broadway, and 320 State Highway Route 1, Malden, in Melrose, Massachusetts, dated October 21st, prepared by Jeffrey Astor, P E P T O E, Van Assen Associates of Andover, Mass. Also, the City Council amended the zoning ordinance to prohibit wholesale distribution use in the highway business zoning district, including the exemption of applications filed prior to the date of first publication of the notice of public hearing on the amendment that was the City Council paying for 3321. It was ordained December 7th, 2021. The date of first publication of public hearing notice was September 10th, 2021. Petitioner also filed a document entitled 320 State Highway Malden, Mass. Supplemental Submission, December 21st, 2021, City of Malden Planning Board Special Permit Application dated December 20th, 21st, 2021. It was unsigned with Pew Management, Calvaro, and Calian, and Langton listed on the cover sheet that describes the proposed mitigation benefits. That has since been updated to a document with the same title, but it is dated 320, I'm sorry, it's dated January 12th, 2022, and it's called Continued Pair. That was a new document that was just received yesterday. Petitioner also filed revised plans. I'll just refer to the title, the set of plans is Pew Management, City of Melrose, Mass. City Planning Review Application, City of Malden, Mass. Special Permit Application, 735 Newberry Court Term, Height, Melrose, Mass., and 320 City Highway, Malden, Mass. Cities of Malden, Melrose, Mass. Just coming dated May 12th, 2021, revised through December 27th, 2021, prepared by Leuven Engineering and Environmental Services of Boston. I'm not going to read it, but there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven pages. Some have been updated, and it's all incorporated by reference to Stan Lee's staff report supplement. Also, the City Panel Review and Panel Review Materials 3 and 4 that I just itemized and provided the opinion of the traffic monitor proposal appears acceptable. So that is, that's what has been submitted or has occurred since the September hearing. There were many revisions to the proposal, which I believe the petitioner is prepared to go, go through and explain to the Board at your request, Chair.
Okay, can you please review that down, please?
Okay, so what I will do is promote, promote the petitioner, John Q, the panelist, and if he, John, if you could just let us know who you would want also promoted so that we can do that, so they can speak as wants to the Board. Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm sorry, can I just share my screen? Is that, is that how we should go about this?
That's fine.
Set it up. All right, can everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. I'll just dive right in. Thank you very much. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again tonight. You know, I think we also want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to work together with you, the city, and to refine this presentation, and we're excited to be able to share some of the updates with you now. As mentioned, this is the special permit hearing for the 320 State Highway project. Our project team is on the line on the virtual meeting, if there are any questions that might arise. So this presentation, we want to focus on, again, some of these updates and dive right into it. So the special permit for the Town Line site on Broadway. Currently, the Town Line site is a bloodhound of the community, with crime, drugs, and many unfortunate activities. But together, we can change all that this evening with a special permit for this project. The proposed project is a 94,000 square foot warehouse on five acres. This site is challenging to redevelop because it sits in two cities between Malden and Melrose. Because there are two cities, there's different zoning, different allowed uses, and different regulations. These challenges are why this property, this well-located property, has not been redeveloped. The proposed project you will see tonight meets the requirements for a special permit, and they also meet the requirements for the City of Melrose, given the previous approvals already received. In accordance with the Broadway Corridor Plan, the proposed design includes inviting pedestrian-friendly frontage along Broadway and a building to accommodate one, possibly two tenants. The building will be operated to the highest Class A standards. You can see here on the top right, the rendering of the building and the rendered site plan below. In addition to some of the negative activities of the site, another major problem noted during our conversations with the neighbors is the flooding at Broadway. We listened to the neighbors in the community and ensured that this design alleviates the problem through improved stormwater management and increased open space. The proposed development transforms an old motel into a state-of-the-art warehouse facility that incorporates green building practices and sustainable features, while also cleaning up the neighborhood and creating good jobs. So during the Planning Board meeting in September, we heard three things, that there were some lingering concerns about potential traffic impacts, the need for a joint meeting with Mass DOT and the City of Malden to discuss the driveway reconfiguration. We also recognized the need to learn more about the city's priorities through discussions with the city and the neighbors. Those discussions helped us refine this special permit application we're presenting this evening. Okay, so how did we respond to what we heard? We updated the site plan. We went and engaged a third-party traffic peer reviewer to review the traffic impact study. We created a more robust traffic monitoring proposal, including a $500,000 escrow account. And then we also improved the community benefits package, which we'll go into all of these in a moment. Okay, so changes to the site plan. We reconfigured the primary site access driveways at both at Route 1 and at Broadway. And then the other items here, you can see, and we'll just, we'll flip to the next slide and show those in a moment. So the large yellow field there is all proposed as porous asphalt in the parking area to improve onsite stormwater management. Also included additional bike racks and dumpster screening, per some of the recommendations from Planner Romero's staff report in September. The most important part of the updates to the plan here, again, are Detail 1 and Detail 2. The left side is Route 99 Broadway, and the right side is Route 1. Those updates to those site driveways. The original site plan was, was, was designed based on initial feedback from Mass DOT and their guidance regarding acceptable design. We were told they would not support changing that design. Fortunately, we're very grateful. We were able to facilitate a call with MassDOT and the City of Malden, and on that call, we discussed how we could achieve City Planner Romero's recommendations to limit truck traffic on Broadway and in Malden. While not Mass DOT's preferred configuration, on the call, they said they would support these changes to the site driveways. We believe they have, this conversation helped Mass DOT better understand how much of a priority the restriction, the left turn restriction on Broadway and the entrance off of Route 1 is to the city into the success of this project. We're really happy they agreed to work with us on these changes and support this design approach. Okay, so zooming into Detail 1, just to orient you again, Detail 1's on the left there, the Broadway, the driveway there. So the southern driveway on Broadway, one of the primary access points. The redesign, this redesign prohibits tractor trailers from turning left out of the site onto Broadway. And when they go left, as you can kind of see from the top corner of the, the plan there, go, if they were to go left, it would be into Malden, right is into the Melrose and Saugus. So how is this accomplished? It's accomplished through the introduction of a channelized island and a no-left turn sign. We've also adjusted the site plan, reduced some of the parking to, to accommodate that and make that, make that a reality. Going to the other side of the site, on the Route 1 side, the addition of a deceleration lane on Route 1 southbound now allows tractor trailers and other vehicles direct entry access to the site off of Route 1. This new approach will significantly reduce property-related truck and vehicle traffic on Broadway. You can see the deceleration lane here highlighted in yellow. We're happy to report this new design keeps project-related truck traffic off Malden city streets. Very excited to be able to say that. We heard lingering concerns about traffic impacts during our last meeting and decided we needed to engage a third-party peer reviewer. To be completely clear, we believe in the traffic impact analysis in the, in the, in the, in the accuracy of their findings in the original CHA-created traffic impact study. This confidence was confirmed by the peer review created by Van Ass Associates Traffic Engineer Jeff Dirk. Jeff has over 30 years of experience and has conducted assessments, reviews, and planning of several hundred warehouse projects. His associate Andrew Arseneau from Van Ass is on the call this evening for any questions. During, excuse me, in the peer review memo, Van Ass confirms the approach findings and conclusions of the traffic study. It confirmed that there will be no meaningful change to nearby traffic volume. They also confirmed that the existing use at full operating capacity, that's a motel with a restaurant, would create more traffic volume than the proposed project. Finally, we also had Van Ass look at alternative allowed uses such as retail, office, or hospitality. They determined that these uses would be significantly more impactful on traffic than the proposed small warehouse. The September staff report recommended a traffic monitoring program. The Melrose Site Plan Approval Conditions also required a program. We worked with our traffic engineering team to incorporate the needs of both cities and took it a step further by adding more specific monitoring details and thresholds, as well as proposing to put $500,000 into an escrow account to be used for traffic mitigation measures if necessary. Please refer to the traffic monitoring program we provided for details, and of course, we'd be happy to take questions. So this is a slide that reflects some of the conversations that we've had with, with the city and some of the members of the city, City Council and other members of the city, community members. So what we're looking at is a table that outlines the originally proposed mitigation, traffic mitigation measures and the community benefit funds. The original proposal included $50,000 for reprogramming the traffic, so you know, at Broadway and Elwell. Through conversations with City Councilor JD Nseka and Stephen Winslow, it came to our attention that the intersection of Broadway and Salem is also, is also problematic from a traffic standpoint. So this evening, we propose to increase the amount by $50,000 to address the Broadway and Salem intersection. Furthermore, our support to show our strong support for the Broadway Corridor Framework Plan, we're increasing the total amount commitment from $125,000 to $150,000. This takes the originally proposed $175,000 and moves it to $250,000. When exploring priorities with the city, we met with Councilor Seega. She mentioned the campaign to build a new ice rink in Ward 8, where this project is, at Linden Park. Tonight, we're happy to be able to commit to $200,000 in funding for the Linden Park Ice Skating Rink Construction Fund and an additional $50,000 for other hunting field youth athletics improvements. On a personal note, the Pew Management team are all former college athletes. So we really recognize the important role that sports play in shaping the community and its youth. We're really excited that we can support this endeavor, and it's something that we're really excited to be able to participate in. So here is a summary table of the proposed mitigation and community benefits. At the top, you can see the originally proposed measures and the amounts that have been updated, going from $50,000 in traffic calming measures to $100,000, the additional $50,000 for the Broadway and Salem intersections, the increase in the support for the Broadway Corridor Framework Plan from $125,000 to $150,000. And then the gray bar, below the gray bar, are the three new benefits and mitigation measures listed. Those include the traffic mitigation escrow account of $500,000, the Linden Park Ice Skating Rink construction funding of $200,000, and the hunting field youth athletic improvements of $50,000. The total mitigation and community benefits package is now $1 million from the originally proposed $175,000. The Town Line Inn is a drain on community resources, and it's also a very challenging site to redevelop. This project provides a vision for a positive way forward that also meets the requirements of both cities. The proposed warehouse facility provides solutions to many of the problems at the site today. Tonight, let's make a positive impact. Together, we can create jobs, increase tax revenue, and improve the Broadway corridor with the approval of this special permit. We would like to work with you, the Planning Board, to arrive at a solution that is a win for everyone. Thank you for your time. Have to take any questions.
Mr. Pew, thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation and the summary, as well as the patience with us working through this technology. Hold on a second, Michelle, we're getting feedback here? Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation summary and the patience with our technology challenges. You know, when I reviewed the revised information, a couple of things, I want to congratulate you on the extra effort you put out there to try to address the concerns we had in September. Personally, the access, the changes to the access to the site and the lowering of the impact of the traffic throughout the neighborhoods was a key item that I was concerned with at the September hearing, and it looks like you've done a nice job addressing that. Also tagging to that, the possible mitigation escrow account, in case we do find that there is more traffic generated or a different type of traffic generated that we have some funds that we can use to address that. I think that's a major positive step. I think the more robust traffic monitoring that you proposed tonight versus the, versus what we discussed in September, and the mitigation along Broadway and the support of the Broadway corridor. And obvious, and it doesn't go unnoticed, the generosity for the Malden youth sports. You know, that, that's a very, very welcomed and, and appreciated effort on your team's part. You know, to help address and work with the city and and try to come to the table with the best possible project possible. and try to come to the table with the best possible project possible uh that you can. Michelle, do you have any questions? Um, the uh the questions I had, I as I as I didn't mention in my summary. My concerns on in September were mainly around the access to the site, the traffic through the neighborhood. Um, and and those clearly have have been addressed nicely.
No, but if you could, if Mr. Pew, John, if you could stop sharing your screen so the other board members um can be seen and participate. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Did did you have anybody else on your team, John, that you wanted to speak or present anything or?
Uh, nope, that was all. I I think if there's any questions that that I can't uh that someone might be better to answer, I'd be happy to call on uh other team members, but that was it. That was the presentation.
Okay, thank you. I I see that you do have a whole team. Your whole team is with you. Um, so thank you.
Um, let's see, Henry Soucy had his hand up, I believe. How do I get back to that screen? Oh, that way. Yeah, Henry Soucy had his hand up. Henry?
Yep, thanks, Joe. Um, I'm just looking for some of the understanding, Michelle, or Mr. Pew. That five hundred thousand dollars in in mitigation, I mean. Who ultimately has, you know, jurisdiction over that funding in the event that circumstances call that it need to be accessed? Um, or not? I mean, how was that determined and then allocated, if you would?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. Um, the the traffic uh monitoring proposal. Uh, I believe you guys should have a copy of it. There's it's a one-page document, but it refers to uh the fact that there'd be a um two one-week uh mitigation, um, excuse me, monitoring uh timelines uh which a traffic, a third-party traffic engineer will uh will uh count where they will count the data to determine um that the that the numbers that we uh expected to have in the traffic impact study that they're in line with uh what actually is there. Um, and so that would be a third-party uh traffic engineer uh that 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 we would hire. Uh, obviously, working with the city uh to do that. And then we would have um if the, you know, one example, the best way to summarize, there's a couple of things, but the the two ma- major points here is if if the amount, the number, the volume of traffic were ten is ten percent over the originally expected amount. So, for example, a good reference point is there's expected a two hundred and four uh trips generated per day for this this particular site. So if it's ten percent or more over that threshold. Uh, the traffic mi- engineer would then propose mitigation measures that can be implemented. Uh, also, we're open to working. We've we've said this as well. We're also open to working to operational adjustments. But the traffic in, so that's an aside, but the traffic engineer in their report will will state this is the the amount that the uh the traffic counts are are off by. And these are the suggested proposed mitigation measures that we can we can implement. And then that money would be released. So that money is available. It's also available for the city to either peer review or um uh or uh, you know, basically keep an eye on that this, all this, this process is working the way in which in the best interest of the city. So. Hopefully, that begins to answer your question. It's it's not that complicated of a of a process, but it's really just, like I said, counting the number of of trips during a seven-day period. Uh, the city of Malden would be will be involved in choosing those two one-week periods at six months after the certificate of occupancy and at twelve months after the certificate of occupancy. Um, so counting those uh the traffic volume, uh doing turning movement and vehicle classification counts at the Broadway driveways, then also evaluating motor crash uh data uh at the at near the uh uh near the project site. So if there's any variances from what's expected there. There will be mitigation uh money available to address any issues that might or might arise from that.
And then to your question, Henry?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, do you have a comment on that?
Yes, I just, I had one other question. If you could, John, explain. So are there two different, this is, you're only going to do the report. The, excuse me, the first data collection is six months after issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. So if you do a partial occupancy, so that you have two tenants, for example. You only do one occupancy. Uh, one part of the buildings occupied before the other. We will be waiting for the full occupancy. Is that correct?
Absolutely, Michelle. Yes.
If it takes five years, it will be partially occupied. We won't do any traffic monitoring until then. Okay, so that was one question. But then you you're going to do two data collections, one after six months and one after a year. Are you going to do two reports or do we wait?
Yes.
For the year.
Two reports. So if there's an issue six months out, we'll provide a report and we'll we'll sit and discuss it. And if there's any traffic mitigation measures necessary, we'll then release the funds to uh to do the analysis and whatever is necessary to to uh improve the situation.
Okay, great. So if we could just uh make sure that's noted, um, I don't know if you're going to be drafting this escrow agreement, but um, this monitoring program, I just wanted to be very clear that there'll be two separate reports issued, one after the six months and one after the year. It wasn't clear from my reading, so that was it. Thank you.
Okay, and then just to be clear also, the the six months and the twelve months. That's going to be coordinated with uh someone at the city. I'm not sure if it would be you or or not, Michelle. But the um, but the, you know, th- those weeks, we're going to work with you to choose those weeks. So it's not just us saying, oh, six months, because as we discussed before. You know, every tenants can have different operating uh, you know, volumes and things of that nature. So we want to work with you to make sure that we're getting the 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 most accurate reading possible.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think I'll leave the point of contact. And then we'll, I'm sure, work with the city engineer and the city peer reviewer. Because obviously, we would want it to not be a holiday week or a school vacation week or a week that's off for whatever reason could be due to the COVID or or who knows what. So, okay, thank you.
Exactly. You got it.
Okay, you all set, Michelle?
Thank you.
Uh, okay, Towadege. Gabriselassie.
Thank you. My question would be for John. It's good, at least you mentioned about like creating a job. But I still have a concern, for example, like there are like many employees who's going to lose their job from Town Hall. Do you guys have a plan to give like priority for them to get hired or what's the plan?
That's something we've discussed. Uh, we discussed that with the city of Malden, uh, yeah, city of Malden, Chamber of Commerce. And uh, we've discussed creating uh local priority for uh for community members. Uh, both at the um uh but for both cities, because it's being permitted to building in both cities. But but the concept of uh, you know, basically advertising the availability of those jobs to local Malden residents is absolutely something we would be uh, we'd be happy to do. I think it's something that we've we've thought about before and we've discussed it. And I think that's something we'd like to be able to implement. If it, is that kind of what you're asking about? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, because I've known like so many people who's looking at job and so many of them, they're going to lose their job. When you guys like owns that property. So I'm curious.
Oh, you're referring specifically to the motel property. Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. There's currently eleven, eleven employees at the motel property. Um, yeah, absolutely. We'd be, you know, there are certainly people that we would talk to. Um, that being said, I mean, realistically, um, I think the idea that if this were to close and then reopen, the this this uh, the space were to reopen fifteen months later. It might be a little uh too too late for some of those specific employees, but we'd love to be happy to talk to those employees. And I think it's a a good idea. It's a very good idea. So we'll include that, yeah, the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Towadege. Uh, it ain't too new cheese.
Yeah, Mr. Pew. Appreciate the presentation and uh the definitely the, as Chuck uh alluded to, the changes to the driveway designs are uh very helpful. Uh, I saw a question regarding the um Route One driveway update. So essentially, with the addition of the deceleration lane, where that actually, it it's hard to tell from the drawings included, but that actually widens that part of the wall, correct? You're kind of taking the decelerate. It doesn't necessarily widen it, but moves the curb lines, so you have that that deceleration lane.
Well, there currently isn't a curb line, uh, Ken. It's it's kind of just wide open over there. Um, so what we're what we're using is the uh the shoulder uh to create the deceleration lane. So I I guess you could, maybe you could characterize it that way, but it really, it's just for access into this site. So I don't know if it necessarily be referred to as widening, but we're using that shoulder space. Yep.
Okay, so it just utilizes the shoulder space better and delineates it better. So uh, the truck drivers and everyone can see, plus you had that striping out there. Uh, that'll help and that'll also.
And we did also adjust the site plan, Ken, to uh the angle of entry. Um, so that uh these large trucks can enter uh safely. And that reduced some of the parking and 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 changed the design a little bit, but it was uh necessary for for a safe uh approach.
Yeah, no, that that's uh that works that well. Actually, it's funny. You you mentioned that about the the approach angle. I was wondering about the excuse me, the exit. Um. I'm sure the, I couldn't find it. I don't know if that changed with the uh traffic engineers or whatever, that that curve for the actual egress onto Route One. I mean, I'm sure the uh the truck turn analysis was done with all that and that's, that's all acceptable.
Yeah, so that that had, that that has opened up a bit more. Um, so there is the ability for traffic to go in that direction. It's it's uh, so we have updated it.
Okay, yeah, because it is uh wider.
It's like. Yeah, still over.
Okay, all right. And then the last question, um, it's actually about the drainage. And uh, again, we can put two sets of drawings from the uh previous presentation. And now, you know, you had some changes and some uh changes to the permeable pavement on the um, you know, on the on the presentation. Were you able to or was was it found any need for any underground storage or uh uh stormwater distribution? I know, I think that came up during the original meeting.
It did come up in the original meeting. Uh, there is some temporary uh retention, uh, but there isn't, you know. For the most part, it, the stormwater is draining off into the drainage ditch of the southeastern. It's referred to as an intermittent stream, the southeast eastern edge of the uh the property. Um, so, so there's some some uh, you know, oil and and such separators and things, but there's, there isn't uh there isn't too much of a of larger infrastructure in terms of uh under, you know, stormwater storage. If you have any specific questions, we get, we'd be happy to get the civil engineer to kind of give you some additional information.
Actually, you touched on the the last thing that I had asked about, uh, was wondering about is, you know, the uh well, water, sand, water, uh, oil separators, are they going to be in the? I can't tell, I mean, where they're located, uh, the in in the parking lot itself.
Uh, I believe they're in the the truck area, but I'd have to, I defer to my civil engineer because she's been, she's the one who's really kind of run run point on that. And I should know, but I don't have that on the top of my head. So uh, Jordan LaFredo, if you're available. Uh, be great if you could provide canvas and details. I I may, I don't want to misquote, misquote myself here. Is there any way we can add Jordan, uh, Michelle?
Yes, I just sent her an invitation. She should be receiving an invitation to join. There she is.
Great.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. Jordan LaFredo here, the civil engineer on the project and with Langan. And John, you did a great job explaining so far, so appreciate it. Um, as for the water quality treatment systems, there are three of them. So they're at each of the discharge points before they go into the intermittent streams. So everything that is being captured on site by the drainage systems will eventually make it to these water quality treatment systems where there'll be a T S S removal for it.
Okay, so those are the three. Those are the three.
Yes.
The the last, the three last structures.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ken, you're all set. Does anyone else have any other questions for the petitioner?
Uh, Eric Henry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just to kind of echo, and you guys are definitely kudos on uh the improved effort with the traffic design. Uh, Ken definitely also hit it up on how much of my major concerns with the the drainage issue with uh it would have, uh, although it seems adequate, it, you know, I think that maybe hopefully we could have gotten a bit more uh with that, that and been able to retain even uh greater planning toward the uh a hundred-year scenario and beyond uh with our water retention and and wetlands around here. Uh, also, uh, maybe this is more so for uh uh, Michelle or not, but uh I did have one lingering question about the uh categorization of the wholesale or or distribution. And where we stood with that. Uh, where?
You had a question for me, Eric?
Yeah, I, maybe it's best for you, Michelle. Uh, we were uh we were talking about the the different types of use wholesale and and distribution, distribution use. Is that still a point of contention or are we all squared away on that? And if we are squared away with that. What was the resolution?
Yes, that the petitioner proposed the new facility could be either warehouse, which is its own use category or wholesale and distribution, which is another use category. The proposal to amend the zoning that passed now proposed to prohibit both of those uses in this district. Only part of that amendment passed. The amendment that prohibits wareho- wholesale and distribution. However, the amendment included specific language, as recommended by the planning board. That it would not apply to applications filed prior to the date of first publication of notice of hearing on that amendment. Which was September. Um, excuse me, September. Um. September ten, this application was filed prior to September tenth, so it would be exempt from that new amendment. So it is still properly before you as a petition seeking a special permit for warehouse and wholesale and distribution use. The zoning amendment does not apply to this project. So it is still before you. That is their petition. They did not change the petition. They're still seeking those two uses. The recommendation, when we get to it, is still the same, that you only consider the warehouse use with accessory distribution. Given concerns we discussed before about what wholesale and distribution could potentially involve.
And we've, so we've had good, good, good conversations with Michelle and Nelson about those uses. And we're very comfortable with the recommendation from Planet Romero uh warehouse with the accessory uh wholesale and distribution.
Yeah, it would be accessory distribution. It would be no wholesale, though, but.
Well, I'm sorry. Thank you for clear.
Okay. Yeah, when we get to that, we we can talk about that. And we are actually also looking at what this board. Uh, this is another discussion to look at possibly defining a separate use category for distribution. Again, it wouldn't apply to this project anyway, but just moving forward, I think the city needs to to do that, so.
Thank you for that point of clarification and thank you for your input, Mr. Pope. I yield.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, let's see, is there any, oh, so many other hands up?
Any board members?
Yeah, no, no, I don't see any board members. Do you have anything else, Michelle, that you'd like to ask the petitioner?
No.
Oh, you're all set. And the last call, anyone has any questions for the petitioner? No, um. Mr. Pew, would, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, just thank you for your time tonight, and we appreciate your consideration here.
Thank you very much. Um, at this point, what we'll do is um entertain anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone that would like to speak in favor. Um. Okay, let's see. I see councillor Winslow would like to speak in favor, so councillor Winslow.
You have to hit the louder talk, I think.
Okay, where'd he go? Okay, where'd he go? Councilor Winslow, my apologies. I fat fingered and lowered your hand before I gave you.
Allowed to talk.
Allowed to talk. There you go. Should be all set now.
All right, thank you very much. Steve Winslow, uh, Ward Six Counselor, eighty-three Jacob Street. Um, I thank uh, the petitioners for their um, thoughtful and uh, fruitful efforts to make improvements. I know I heard from constituents very much concerned and myself concerned about your truck, truck traffic, um, you know, down Broadway and through the Maplewood and Linden area. I think the uh, design improvements on both uh, Broadway and Route One are very significant. I know it's Mass DOT is very difficult to deal with, so um, getting them to get to these changes um, is very uh, important, but uh, I think it's very critical. I appreciate the um, the commitment uh, to the escrow account um, of the five hundred thousand dollars. I have, you know, talked with that uh, attorney, Calhan. And um, you know, I I did, you know, have some of the same concerns that uh, board member Susie had about, um, you know, when is it triggered? Um, you know, making sure that it would start after full occupancy and that type of thing. So um, I'm, I guess I was reassured that um, it's has real and substantial things. Obviously, if traffic doesn't increase, we're all fine with that, but um, it it's a very significant commitment in the event that uh, uh, the data shows um, uh, the difference and it's it's clear uh, what those triggers are. So I appreciate um, the applicant's willingness to work and and dedicate money to Salem and Broadway intersection. That's a very uh, critical intersection for both uh, you know, myself and Councilor Sika. That's a very busy intersection. It has uh, not been upgraded. I'm hopeful that um, with this commitment, we might even be able to leverage that with some other uh, grants that could make more substantial improvements and um, and the commitment to the Broadway corridor in general. Um, we are, uh, we just talked about that with our traffic planner. And um, we, the city will actually be doing some traffic counts, um, even before uh, the project uh, probably gets underway as well. So we'll have some information that we can uh, you know, use to compare that type of thing. So I'm so very excited on those developments and um, and also the gr- the great commitment to the youth of Malden with the uh, the work at the Linden Rink and the um, and and the field there. That's a a very significant commitment. So I just uh, I I do want to speak in favor of the project um, and look forward to uh, seeing this go through. Um, you know, I, that's uh, so that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, let me see, who's next? Who do I see next? Um, Steve Winslow. It's already spoken. Yeah, and I'm off mute, so I'm all set. Um, Councilor Sika. Councilor Sika. Is she all set? Hit allowed to talk. J D Sika, allowed to talk. Councilor Sika, how's that? Is that better?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. I'm, I apologize. I don't know what was going on. Um, good evening, guys. Thank you for um, allowing me to speak, um, speaking in favor of this petition. Um, I've been in front of you before, so I'm not going to bore you with the same comments that I've made the past um, meetings. I just wanted to uh, thank John and AJ for listening to Councilor Winslow and myself's recommendations um, to help with the Broadway corridor study and some of the issues that we are currently facing on that stretch of road. Uh, and I just want to allow for the public to hear. I'm sure you're going to be getting some people in opposition of this project who are going to state that Melrose is going to be the one that is getting all the tax revenue and the money from this um, particular project. And Malden's only going to get the trucks. And um, that is so far from the truth. Although Melrose does have a little bit more of the building in in Melrose than Malden does. Malden and Med, um, Melrose has agreed to share fifty percent of the building permit, which is huge. So depending on how much the building um, construction is, we actually will get sixteen dollars per that, per thousand um, square feet of construction. So if this project is a million dollars, then it's sixteen thousand dollars. And we are going to be sharing that with Melrose. Melrose not going to be getting more. Malden's not going to be getting less. It's going to be a fifty fifty um, down the middle, whatever the building permit may be. Uh, with, Malden is also taking the lead on all inspections for this project. So Melrose will still be there, but Malden will be the one that has control. Um, Melrose will just make sure that all the special conditions and things that they had asked for from the petitioner have been met. So Malden will be taking the lead. And we will also um, be getting the full final cost affidavit. So um, I'm not sure if anybody knows what that is, but at the end of the project, if they file for a building permit and they say that the building's going to cost a million, they get uh, and we issued a building permit for the price, but at the end of the project, it ends up being double that and it's two million. They have to pay the additional fee for the, the more money that the building was. So Malden will be receiving the full final cost affidavit, which I was happy to hear when I spoke to um, our building commissioner Nelson Miller today. So I just wanted to make sure that our residents of Malden, whoever's watching and you on the planning board, understand that although we may have some people that are going to speak this evening that are going to try to tell you differently, Malden will definitely be benefiting from this project. Not just um, being able to lose the Town Line Motel, which has had a huge has been a huge drain on a uh, first responders. In just one year, we had over six hundred calls that, as I mentioned the last time that um, I was in front of you. We need to do something with this property. We can't wait for something else to come along. God knows if and when that will ever be. This, this property has been an eyesore for the city and the, the new plans that you see in front of you this evening, they're a welcome sight as far as I'm concerned. I've been the counselor for the last eight years in Wootie. This parcel has been nothing but an eyesore and nothing but trouble for um, Wootie residents. I'm happy to see that John and AJ listened to me for the no left um, hand turn. I asked for a simple sign. I think they went above and beyond by actually making it impossible for somebody to leave that particular parcel and take a left-hand turn. It's similar to um, how you get out of Lowe's parking lot, which is just a couple hundred feet away. You cannot take that left-hand turn because the, the way that um, they, they decided to configure it and I, I think it's awesome. So I just want to thank John and AJ again for listening to Councilor Winslow's and I's concerns. And I hope that we can move this petition this evening and and you guys can approve it. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor. Um, okay, next person, John Mayara. Give me a second, John. Uh, lower hand. Uh, where's John go? John, allowed to talk. John, are you there?
I'm here. Is this working?
Superb. Sounds great.
Okay, well, I'm a well-known quantity as being mostly pro development projects. And so I'm pro this project and in part because of things that.
Name and record, name and address for record.
I am John Mayara and my address is sixty-eight Washington Street, apartment two in Malden. Sorry about that. And so, yeah, this is an, has a parcel that has been unproductive for a long time. And I think it's a major mistake to hold out for some unicorn that isn't before anybody. And this is the project that we have before us and it should be accepted. If I can make one sort of complaint, it's that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You want one?
If folks can mute themselves while the people are speaking.
I apologize. I don't know how it got undone, but I muted it after I was done. I apologize.
Oh, no problem, no problem. I thought someone was telling me to shut up. So the, the one thing is that um, when you have gainful businesses, we're going to have some additional activity in the area. There is no way to escape that in some cases. And I think that the continual hand wringing about issues such as traffic is kind of a mistake to suppress any kind of commercial activity. I agree that we want to make proper design decisions and to mitigate any snarl ups we have. But I think it's a mistake to try to ring more and more, potentially discouraging concessions out of people who want to do potentially valuable projects. That's the only thing, but I'm all for it. I hope it works. Good luck, guys, and that's all I got.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Mayara, thank you. Okay, let's see who's next. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else with a hand up that wants to speak in favor. Uh, Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
Yes. We have one letter dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-two. It's addressed to the Malden Planning Board. It reads, dear members of the planning board, I write in support of granting a special permit for the proposed warehouse and distribution facility at three twenty State Highway. This property is currently the site of three single-story motel buildings, as well as a vacant restaurant and trailer. We believe that this project primarily benefits the city of Malden in two ways. The first is a benefit through subtraction. The project will remove what is currently a significant burden on city resources, especially as it relates to our police, fire, inspectional services and health departments. In addition to the proposed use, significantly decreasing the impact on city resources, the traffic flow will also improve thanks to your advocacy of having the applicant coordinate with us in Mass DOT to mitigate the longstanding impacts in that area. Moreover, the petitioner has also agreed to donate funds to the neighborhood. Again, I write in full support of this petition being granted. And I'm available if I can answer any questions. In the meantime, I thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, signed Gary Christensen, Mayor, City of Malden.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anything else that you have to read in favor?
No.
Um, hold on a second. I see Councilor Sika has her hand up.
Hi, thank you, Chuck. Really fast. I have a resident that says that she's had her hand up for a while. Do you see anybody else with their hand up?
I see no one under attendees. What, do you happen to know what the uh, woman's name is?
Uh, Trish Sargent or Patricia Sargent.
Hold on a second. Let me see if I see her. I see Trish Sargent. I see no hand up, but I will allow to talk.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilor. Miss Sargent, are you there? Oh, you're on mute. Let me see. With um, you're on, you uh, remove permission. Yeah, I think you need to, okay, you're unmuted on your end. So Miss Sargent, if you can give your name and address for the record.
Thank you. It's Trish Sargent, six eighty-five Broadway, number thirty-one in Malden. Councilor Sika, thank you for that. My hand icon was up. I'm not sure what happened on the other end, but I appreciate your help. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that I spoke back in September and I'm still a firm believer in this project. Um, I would like to applaud John, AJ and Councilor Sika for actually implementing that no left-hand turn. We, as a neighborhood, are very much in favor of this project after all we've dealt with over the past twenty-something years. But to have that no left turn is going to alleviate that turnaround that I had spoke of in September with you folks of the trucks turning into A Street behind Sabatino's and going in loops all day long. So if anything, I applaud them for adding that because it's actually going to cut down on the tremendous amount of traffic that we have to deal with as residents of the abutting neighborhood. So I'm very grateful and I'm thrilled and hoping that this project goes through as planned. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Miss Sargent. Uh, let me see if I can see if there's anyone else that would like to speak in favor. I'm going through the list. I don't see anyone with a hand up on my end. Okay, so Michelle, you don't have anything else to read in favor?
No.
So not seeing any hands, um, and not hearing anything, Michelle, want, needs to read. I declared the uh, in favor portion of the hearing closed. And I'd like to open up the portion for anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this petition. Anyone to speak in opposition. Uh, Councilor O'Malley. Uh, Councilor O'Malley, don't forget, name and address for the record. And you should be able to speak.
Hello, everyone. Uh, Ryan O'Malley, Ward Four City Councilor, seven six Main Street, Malden. Um, I do want to thank the planning board uh, in the city of Malden of working with the applicant to try to get this project as good as it can be. Uh, two questions I would urge you to ask uh, before you take any action. Uh, one would be, uh, can tractor trailers enter the site from Broadway? Can they take a right or a left from Broadway into the site? Two, can tractor trailers exit the site onto Route One? Um, I believe it is very important for the community to know whether or not those two uh, entering and exit maneuvers by tractor-trailers specifically is possible. Uh, we talked about the impact of the project. Uh, in one ways, one of the ways we can measure that is traffic counts. And 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 obviously, the, the number of traffic uh, volume is going to impact the wear and tear it has on our roads. Um, but this isn't normal traffic. Um, this is very heavy tractor-trailers. Uh, so the weight of the vehicles is another uh, factor that has to be taken into consideration here. And this is not normal traffic. So again, I appreciate that the planning board tabled this petition. Uh, and I believe it allowed uh, the feedback to be gathered to make this a better project than what we uh, saw back in September. But I still, still think that it will have a, a, a significant negative impact on the community. Um, you know, this is exactly what this, this process is for. We're meant to ask the hard questions. We're, we're meant to take our time and make sure that we get the best project possible. Um, so I do appreciate that this is better than it was in the, in the past, um, but I still think it's detrimental to the community. Thank you.
Oh, I wasn't on before. Okay, Mr. Pew, would you like to speak to whether tractor-trailers can enter and exit on both Route ninety-nine and Route One?
Sure, certainly. Uh, those are important questions. Be happy to answer those questions. The um, the way that we intend, so first I want to start with the way that we intend to manage this site and also what the most efficient path for a tractor-trailer would be. The, we intend to manage this site by directing truck traffic, tractor-trailers specifically, to enter this site off of Route One. As you can imagine, if you're driving a truck, there's little to no reason to go onto Broadway if you want to avoid traffic lights. There is a traffic light at the Lowe's up the street that you would get, get stopped by if you were trying to access the site. So that's number one. Now, so that, that's an important point. These truck drivers do whatever they can do to avoid traffic lights and left turns. So we expect pretty much all of our traffic to come from trucks off of Route One. Now, in the event that a truck, a tractor-trailer specifically, there was some type of emergency or they were directed the wrong way and they ended up on Broadway and they needed to turn into the site. Again, this is in the city of Melrose. I just want to remind everybody. The left side of the site is in the city of Melrose. If they need to turn left into the site, they're able to do that. So instead of having a truck drive through. drive through Malden and turn around and go back on Route 1 and go south again to access this site, they can turn left into the driveway from Broadway. So we've set it up so that we're going to be directing the traffic that enters the site via Route 1, kind of because that's the most efficient, most obvious and logical way for trucks to enter. And then as they leave the site, they're going to be directed to go north on Route 1 out of the site, excuse me, north on Broadway out of the site, excuse me. Now, to the question regarding whether tractor-trailers can go south, can go exit the site and go southbound on Route 1. The turn is extremely sharp turn, and it is not a safe turn to make for tractor-trailers. That being said, all other traffic is capable of making that turn safely. That's both passenger vehicles and box trucks and vans. So we expect a very, very large amount of all this traffic to be on Route 1, with some of the tractor-trailers going out of the site, going northbound on Route 99 Broadway, and regular passenger vehicles and vans accessing the site from Broadway as well as necessary. But the idea that we're going to not allow for a tractor-trailer to turn the site off of Broadway isn't logical because of the reason I mentioned before, because then they'd have to drive all, if they couldn't go left into the site, they'd have to drive all the way through Malden and really create that problem that we're trying to avoid. So I think that's the answer to the question. I hope that that was sufficient. And if there's any additional questions, be happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Let's see, is there anyone else? Am I still, yeah, I'm on mute. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Anyone else to speak in opposition? I'm not seeing any hands up. Michelle, do you have anything to read in opposition?
No.
Okay, you don't have anything to read. I do notice a couple counselors on. I'm not sure if they wanted to speak or not. But if no one puts their hand up, I'll give folks a second. We'll declare that part of the hearing closed. So thank you very much. Michelle, can you take us through your staff report?
Mr. Chair, point of order, please.
Yes.
I just want to mention that was not at the beginning for the roll call. This is Eric Henry, Planning Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Michelle, if you want to take us through the staff report.
Thank you. Reading from this supplement dated January 12, 2022. It's incorporated herein by reference into your record and into the meeting. I won't repeat anything I've already said. You did hear about revisions to the proposal in terms of the number parking spaces was reduced in Malden. Now 53 are being provided. Parking pavement, 30 spaces in Malden will be installed using permeable porous pavement. And we just heard at length during the presentation and the follow-up questions regarding site access egress that's been modified. Also, I'll note bicycle parking, the required bicycle parking in Malden is depicted on the revised site plan. Dumpsters are also, the location is now depicted on the plan, and it does comply with sighting requirements and visual screening requirements of our ordinance. The traffic mitigation, this staff report does not reflect the recent updates, which I want to include. And correct for the record. So in terms of mitigation funds, petitioner is proposing $100,000, a voluntary contribution of $100,000 to the city to be used for traffic calming measures along Broadway. So that's what's shown on page 14 of the supplemental submission dated today. Dated today. So those are traffic calming measures along Broadway. Originally, I believe it was 50. The December proposal version showed 75, and now it is 100,000. So I want to correct that for the record in terms of what the staff report says. Also, in terms of the Broadway Corridor Framework Plan, the voluntary contribution. The December materials, I believe, said 175. This is showing 150, so I want to make that note. If that is correct, I'll just double-check that. Yes, so that that seems to be what the re-allocation is. So of some of that money, it seems like it's moved a little bit. So between those two funds, between those two contributions, it's 100,000 and 150,000. In terms of other community benefits, you heard about the contribution to the Linden Park Ice Skating Rain Construction Fund in the youth athletic improvements at Linden Park and Hunting Field. I believe those numbers stayed the same, 200,000 and 150,000. So findings required to grant the special permit. You would need to find compliance with the dimensional controls and parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. You would need to find traffic and traffic patterns generated by the proposed use will not adversely impact any of the surrounding streets or create a traffic or safety hazard. You would need to find the proposed use will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. The proposed use is not in conflict with surrounding land uses, and the proposed use is in the interest of the common good. So the recommendations, which are made prior to the public hearing, are, one, provided that the board makes the required findings, to grant a special permit for warehouse use with accessory distribution, subject to the following conditions. One, all development shall be as per plans unless modified by these conditions. Two, modifications of the floor plans are allowed. Three, this special permit authorizes use of the property for warehouse use with accessory distribution. No wholesale or retail sales are allowed. Four, no outside storage of any kind is allowed except for trash stored in enclosed dumpsters. Five, install and maintain privacy fencing and screening along Southern Property Line. Six, implement the following traffic and safety mitigation at the site and project area. A, make the following voluntary monetary contributions to the city for traffic and safety improvements in the project area upon issuance of any certificate of occupancy. A is 100,000 for traffic calming measures to be implemented along the Broadway Corridor. And B is 150,000 for Broadway Corridor. I think it should say Broadway Corridor Framework Plan improvements or engineering studies. B, relocation of an MBTA bus stop close to the site. C, installation of signage on site to prohibit idling. D, management of truck access by the facility loading dock manager or operations manager. E, implement traffic monitoring and mitigation program dated October 20, 2021, which is incorporated herein by reference. Seven, as a benefit to the community, make the following voluntary monetary contributions to the city with 50% to be paid at issuance of any certificate of occupancy and 50% to be paid six months after issuance of any certificate of occupancy. $200,000 to the Linden Park Ice Skating Rain Construction Fund and $50,000 to be used for youth athletic improvements at Linden Park and Hunting Field. And then eight, the special permit shall expire December 31, 2024 unless substantial use or construction has commenced. Two things I do want to comment, these two conditions, six and seven, regarding these so-called mitigation and community benefits payments are going to be triggered on issuance of any certificate of occupancy. It's not final occupancy. So if only part of the building is occupied, that will trigger the payment of those funds. So I just wanted to be clear. I know when we've talked about the traffic monitoring proposal, those studies, data collection aren't triggered until there's full occupancy, or we should call it final occupancy. And final occupancy could just be one occupancy permit, but it could also be multiple occupancy permits. These two conditions I'm recommending are triggered upon issuance of any certificate of occupancy. So that was that. And then the second part of the recommendation is that provided the board does not make the required findings, is to deny a special permit for wholesale and distribution use. Turn it back over to the chair.
So, Michelle, do we need to take two votes?
No, unless, no, it depends on what the motion is.
Very good.
Do one vote.
Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Anyone on the board have a question for Michelle? Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michelle, given the updated plans as it relates to the access and egress to the site, I know we sometimes rely on all development shall be as per plans, but I wonder whether or not it would be appropriate to add more specific conditions about access and egress to the site according to the updates.
You certainly, you could. I think as per plans, it will be as per the revised plans, if you want to add that. We could add that the, actually specifically reference the plans if you feel more comfortable with that. Typically, it says as per plans, and then the in the decision, it will, I will specifically cite what plan you reviewed and was before you. We certainly can specifically reference the plan set. If you want to, we, I certainly can do that as per plans, and then I'll, you know, cite the name and date, et cetera.
I just think that I think that particularly, as much as the signage is going to be there and there are going to be the restrictions with the lanes, I think at a minimum, it would be important to include that there should be no egress left onto Route 99 South from the site.
Okay, so you're talking about another, another condition that would specify that would state that?
Yes.
That'd be a nice condition.
Okay. Okay, we're specifically talking about tractor-trailers. So tractor-trailer access or tractors, tractor-trailer egress?
I understood that it was all egress from the site was prohibited onto Route 99 South.
Yeah, there's no left-hand egress out of out of the site, Michelle, not just tractor-trailers.
Okay, so no left, no left turn. This is just for the southern driveway. The driveway, the northern Broadway driveway, I believe you can take a left, you could still take a left out of. That's just for passenger vehicles? That's the other, is that? I believe that's so we'll, yeah, we'll say okay, no egress from southern Site Drive on Broadway. No left-turn egress from Southern Site Drive on Broadway. Or left-turn egress from Southern Site Drive Way on Broadway is prohibited for any vehicle. Does that sound sound like it covers it?
Patrick?
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I see, I think Mr. Pugh lowered his hand. Okay.
So left-turn e, condition nine would be left-turn egress from Southern Site Drive on Broadway is prohibited for any vehicle. Yes.
Okay, Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to point a clarification on Patrick's amendment. So we, I think this is specifically addressing the southern driveway. So that if I'm understanding correctly, that the northern driveway, both left and right-hand egress on to Route 99 can be made by all types of vehicle, vehicular traffic?
Well, it's only a 15-foot driveway, and it's passenger egress only. Passenger egress, passenger vehicle egress only. I mean, it's only 15 feet wide, as well as the driveway to get to that. I believe it's 15 feet. So, yeah, I mean, a small, small vehicles could still take a left. They'd have to go through, they'd have to go through the parking lot north on the site and then take a left to get to the exit point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Patrick Fitzgerald, did you raise your hand again, Patrick?
I did. Thank you. I had an additional question about the condition number seven. Michelle, are you able to tell us when in the past we've ever included a condition about contributions that are not directly related to the site or the project?
It's been a long time since, since we've done it. It it used to be more frequent, say, you know, 15, 20 years ago, there would be contributions, sponsorship of youth sports teams, things like that. If the petitioner is voluntarily making it, it's, it's my understanding that that is allowed. It's you can't impose it as a, as a condition if they're not agreeing to it. And I'm not sure. I mean, I understand it's a voluntary contribution.
Right. My concern is that it's no longer voluntary when it becomes a condition of a special permit and the appearance that it may create that a petition could be bought. And in full disclosure, I'm a resident of Ward 8. My children attend that school and directly use that park. It would be a personal benefit, not only to the community and my family, but I'm just hesitant to require it as a, as a condition. But if, if you believe that it's you know, that it's appropriate, I just want to make it clear that any decision I make on this permit will be based on the facts and circumstances of the petition and not because of any reported voluntary contributions.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not sure it's appropriate. It's, it's been proposed, it's been agreed to. It would be the petitioner, I believe, that would challenge, challenge your condition if you just impose the condition and they didn't agree to it. And I do think if they didn't agree to it and challenged it, it would be overturned because there's no connection to the project. I hear your concerns. My only comment I'll make is in the past, when similar contributions have been proposed, if they're not put in to a permit or something, I do know there, and there was to a permit or or something, I I do know there and there was a case a while back and had to do with a self-storage unit contribution. It was not put in as a condition and there was no recourse, just entering it into the record isn't isn't um sometimes the counselor does not want it put into the permit. They say, we'll agree to it. We'll come up with our own agreement. It does become binding if it's in the special permit. So.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. You all said, Patrick?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other hands up from the board? I don't see any other hands up from the board for questions.
Maybe I would suggest we'll reward the condition to say petitioner agrees to make the following. We'll add that in. So would read as a benefit to the community, petitioner agrees to make the following voluntary contributions to the city. I don't know if you want to say proposes and agrees, if that gives it more.
I don't think the wording matters. If it's in there, it's in there, you know.
Yeah, true, true. So it's up to the board whether you want to amend that condition or not.
Okay, any other questions from Michelle? I don't see any. Is there a motion then? Uh, Ken Antonucci. As to unmute, Ken Antonucci.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the special permit for warehouse use with accessory distribution subject to the nine conditions read and to clarify number six, A, A and B dollar amounts corrected by Michelle's comments.
Okay. Ken's made the motion um to approve the recommendation of staff with the items we discussed. To what age Gabrisalassi?
I will second.
Very good. To what age seconds? Okay. Let me know when you're ready, Michelle, and how I'm going to do this. What I suggest, you guys can all take yourselves off mute. Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay, so Michelle calls your name. If you could remove yourself from mute. Um, and uh vote and then you can put yourself back on mute, please.
Ken Antonucci?
Yes.
Charles Ferguson?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
To what age Gabrisalassi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Sucey?
Yes.
Chuck Ioban?
Yes, the petition has been granted with conditions. Thank you all very much um for attending. Thank you very much for enduring our struggles to get the technology working. Um, and I wish you lots of luck with this uh with this project. It's going to be a big one up there.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck with it.
Thanks, bye.
Okay, thank you. We'll give folks a moment to um to leave. Um, what I would like to say is a couple things. Um, we had a little bit of struggles uh getting set up. Um, but I would like to say that the there was another hearing, a joint hearing with the City Council Ordinance Committee that was uh that is going to be rescheduled to February 9th. That there was a portion of that particular paper that wasn't properly advertised. So we're going to um hear it in full with all the components of it on February 9th. Um, and Michelle, can you speak to 36 Charles Street?
Yes, 30 36 Charles Street um is a petition for a marijuana establishment, specifically a marijuana retailer. The petition is incomplete at this time. So Building Commissioner Nelson Miller and I work with the petitioner to devise them of what's missing and 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 get some, give them the opportunity to provide that before we make a recommendation. So we will not be discussing that tonight. It's not ready. Um, and it the petition has not been processed yet for public hearing, which would be by the City Council. Um, so it's still under review by Nelson Miller and we will hopefully um be able to discuss it at our February meeting. Um, this would be an advisory recommendation to the City Council. Thank you.
Very good. Um, room Charles Street. The last thing on our agenda is uh an update from Community Preservation Committee, Eric Henry.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Uh, we we've met last month. We were scheduled to meet again on the 19th. We just went through some training here as well. A couple of big items. Uh, this this uh Akirink was one issue that was before us and also Dever Park uh and uh Friends of Fuji have some uh of Oak Grove, say Fuji, Friends of Oak Grove have projects coming before us as well. So things are moving right along with that, unless we have any specific questions.
Nope, nope, just just giving you an opportunity to um to update us, let us know what's going on if you need to.
Roger that.
Okay, very good then. Thank you all again for your patience. Um, is there a motion to adjourn? Eric McCush makes the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Ken Antonucci second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much and stay safe out there. Stay COVID free.
Yeah, good night, guys.
Thank you all.
Bye bye. Thank you all. Bye, good night. Bye bye.
Good job, Chuck and uh Michelle.
Yeah, finally made it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Good first time.